Okay councillors, please stand. Welcome councillors, members of the executive and the public that join us today at this rate. As one rural city council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land upon which we meet, then pay our respects to elders both past and present. Councillor Ben, please.
We beset you Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Thank you, please be seated. Mr CEO, do we have any questions?
No, all councillors are present. Mr Mayor?
Directors and officers present.
Yes, and Director Petcover-Green and Lesky are present and Director Myers is on other duties.
Thank you. Minutes, confirmation of minutes. I think this has all read the minutes. Can I move the minutes of the meeting held 16th of March 2021, please confirm please.
I move it, I've accepted this.
Seconded by councillor Keane, advisor Vala, Carrie. As far as a conflict of interest, we made a with any conflict of interest in regard to any matter before consent. We have none. Joint letters and reading of petitions, do you have any, Mr CEO?
No, Mr Mayor.
Do, public question time. We have one question from Mr Alison Black.
I have a motion, Mr Mayor, that we put aside standing orders.
Thank you. And seconded, thank advisor Vala, thank you, Carrie. In regards to the council meeting of 15th December 2020, in regard to recreational community allocation of water from the Commonwealth Environmental Water Holder and the council write to various parties including the Prime Minister. Can council provide an update regarding progress made against each of the actions listed above, advise of responses received and if responses have been received, advise the community of the outcome. Has council written to the Commonwealth Environmental Water Holder and has a response been received? If so can, council advise the committee of the response.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank Ms Black for her question. I have here in front of me the letters that council wrote in response to that resolution of September last year. We wrote to the 47 Victorian councils in the Murray-Dalling Basin, 10 New South Wales councils which are above the Murray River. We also copied in the Murray River Ripper councils, but the primary letter was to the Prime Minister and also to the Deputy Prime Minister and our local federal member, Anne Webster. We have received a number of responses to that correspondence, Mr Mayor, and I have those here as well. Probably the primary response is that from the Prime Minister, although I will note that we received letters of support from a small number of other municipalities, both in Victoria and New South Wales. But the Prime Minister writes back to you, Mr Mayor, and he says, Dear Mayor, thank you for your letter dated 16th of September 2020 to the Prime Minister, the Honourable Scott Morrison MP regarding recreational water for the Murray River. The Prime Minister has asked me to respond on his behalf. I sincerely apologise for the delay in responding to you. And this letter was received the 20th of November, I should note, Mr Mayor. The Murray-Dalling Basin plan and water used by the Commonwealth Environment Water Holder is the best chance we have to get the balance right and keep the river alive for our regional communities and the farmers that rely on it. But we know communities have been doing it tough. That is why on the 4th of September, the Minister for Resources Water of Northern Australia, Keith Pitt, announced an additional investment of over $230 billion through the Murray-Dalling Communities Investment Package to put communities and jobs at the centre of the basin plan. And then there's a website where one can get more information. As part of the 2021 budget, the government also committed a further $1 billion to extend the successful local roads and community infrastructure programme to provide employment opportunities for local communities and support local businesses. This brings a total, talks about 1.5 billion, and for Swan Hill Rural City Council, we can access an additional $2.9 million to fast track shovel-ready projects. And they are funds that had since been announced, Mr Mayor. I would like to encourage the council to monitor the Department of Infrastructure Transport and so, and Communications website for information. And then, Mr Mayor, to the issue we wrote about. As the issues you have raised are the responsibility of the Minister for the Environment, the Honourable Susan Lay MP, I have referred your correspondence to her office for consideration. I've also provided a copy of this letter to the Deputy Prime Minister and Minister for Infrastructure, Transport and Regional Development, the Honourable Michael McCormick MP, and the Minister for Resources Water in Northern Australia, the Honourable Keith Pitt. That is signed by Ben Morton, who is Chief Staff of the Prime Minister. Sorry, Assistant Minister to the Prime Minister, I should say, in Cabinet. And also report that we have not received a substantive response from Minister Lay in relation to this.
Thank you, CEO. Move that we resume standing orders please. Moved councillor Ben, seconded councillor Jeffrey, advisor Vala, Carrie. Open forum, do you have any members of the public wishing to address us in open forum? We do not. Section B, we go. Item B 21.24, asset management, road management plan and register of public roads. Mr Petcover, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report seeks council's adoption of the draft road management plan and the release of the road management plan for public consultation. Our road management plan is a document that's reviewed on a regular basis, at a minimum every four years, within six months after a new council is elected. The road management plan sets up the level of service that our infrastructure that supports roads and footpath is providing to the community. It really talks about the maintenance standards, the inspection standards and the standard of the road itself. The other document that's attached in it also to be released for public consultation is the register of public roads, which sets the classification of the different roads. So the two documents should be read in conjunction with each other. The only document that we're seeking public input on is the road management plan as required. So the road management plan will be advertised for a minimum of 28 days and it depends on the publishing times for the different local newspapers. It probably will go within at least a week, about the 28 days, just to make sure that that is the minimum time that we've advertised for.
Okay, questions councillors? Yes, councillor Ben?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a quick one. When you say it's going to be advertised, that the draft has been released, where can the public actually view it?
So they'll be able to view it on the website and any council offices.
Okay, great, thank you.
Will they be able to get hard copy, if required, for council offices?
To review at the office, yes. As you've seen, it's a 120 odd page document. So it probably is not something that will be printing out for every person that wants a copy to take home. But they should certainly have come instead.
That's all, okay.
Is it possible to see on the road management plan how a road has been reclassified? I can see the classifications as they are now, but is it possible for someone in the community to see what the, how the road was classified before?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes?
Yeah, there is a table that specifies how the, so when you're going, I do apologise, you need to go into the register of public roads that has two columns, previous and new classification. For the big document, that's the table for each individual road. So then people can actually see their segment of their road being reclassified if that's applicable, rather than a generic table.
Right. Are the council going to reach out to the smaller communities by visitation to their community groups, et cetera, to discuss the road management plan in detail? Or is it simply that the communities need to be proactive and respond to this advertisement?
So it's both. We'll certainly approach the community groups and the farmers' federation. It's strategic uses, but people should be quite, even have a look at the impact that this has on them and their business.
Thank you.
Any further questions councillors? Not prior to move it please.
Oh, maybe.
Moved councillor Young, seconded, councillor Keane. Do you want to speak to the motion, councillor Young?
I just think, okay, jobs being done, this is amazing to see the maps and all the information that's in here. So it's obviously been a big expense to the government, to our local government, to put it all together. So congratulations for all the work that you've done. And I just think it'd be great to go out to consultation now and get the feedback.
Okay, councillor Keane.
Just to add to that, thank you. Again, just to endorse it, it's a great document. It's very clear and I guess as a previous, somebody who might have been critical in the past of council roads and processes and stuff like that, it is actually very clear as to what the, how the public can be involved in road management and how they can report various issues in roads and how council will respond to that. So it's very clear and it's a good document. Thank you.
Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor.
Yes, yes, I would like to say I also agree. It's lovely to see that there's a large swath of roads that were previously in an unmaintained classification that are now, you know, to have an amount of maintenance and that's very admirable. It's quite clear. But it does require a fair bit of analysis to understand what it is. And I do think that it's very important that we uphold the community consultation guidelines and that we ensure that our smaller communities or all the communities who it's relevant to, because it does affect people's lives and it's very relevant to them. And it's one of the issues that's most commonly discussed with us. So I think it's a very good document, but it is important that people understand it and can give their feedback. Thank you. But great work from the council officers.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion?
Oh, yes, councillor, just one thing in relation to this road management plan. It's a good document for people to look at. We often get bad feedback on roads. A lot of the time, it's Vic Road, roads. This is our roads, this is how we maintain our roads. So the community, if they get the opportunity to do a survey, just actually look to see whose roads are whose. So don't go and give council a bad rap when they're actually not our roads that they're complaining about. Any, Mr Mayor?
Thank you, councillor McFie. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? There are none, councillor.
Country Week tennis and then a proposed new tennis event called Australian Seniors, which is a two-week event proposed to be held in 2022, two weeks after Country Week tennis. The organisers of that event have requested support from council to run that event. And this report outlines what that request is and the benefit that it would bring to the municipality should that event proceed. The good thing about this is it is following Country Week tennis. So council will have done the work on the courts, so it will get used twice and without much additional cost to keep the courts in good condition for the second event. It's estimated that Country Week tennis, the impact is about $1.5 million. It's estimated that the, this event will bring in something like $2.2 million. And there is a table within the report which highlights the various other economic impacts for other events in the municipality. The report recommends that council approve $30,000 in cash sponsorship for the 2022 Australian Seniors Tennis Championships on condition that council secures the sponsorship and sponsorship naming rights and allocate an additional $30,000 to the 2122 Financial Year Event Support Fund budget to accommodate that.
Questions councillors? Councillor Jeffrey?
The, Dr Green, in the report, they're requesting $40,000, they're recommending $30,000 and says that it's one of our end of support, it pleads financial assistance. Don't know how much they've put towards it, just so we know what the cap is.
Would we understand about $10,000?
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Councillor Ben?
So with that $10,000, are they requesting $40,000 on top of what Swan Hill Inc. have contributed or intention to?
Total.
Total, okay.
Yes, councillor Ben?
Another question. Under the financial implications, I'm just seeking some clarity around that and will make sense to some. I just want it in really simple terms for public record. Do we have the money?
Short answer is yes. So I'll just explain it. The, it says there, there's an estimated $48,000 remaining in the event support fund for this financial year. It's actually a little bit less than that, about $43,000. Some accounts have come in since this report was written.
Okay.
So it's about 43, it's a bit over $43,000. Now, that money will go back into general revenue at the end of the financial year if it's not spent. So what we're suggesting is that that, rather than carried over, that we rebudget an additional $30,000 for next year.
So in effect, reallocating it into the event support fund. Right, that's what I want to clarify on. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes, just in these very difficult COVID times, how do we go if the event is cancelled?
It'll be like this year with Country Week being cancelled.
So we won't lose the $30,000, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it depends when we give it to them, I guess. Do we give it to them after the event or before the event? They will want some guarantee of some of that funding. So for instance, this year with Country Week, we spent $40,000 getting the courts ready. So lost dollars.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. Would they have any insurance or would we ask them to make sure that they're insured to cover that, that event? Or do we have our own type of insurance to cover us?
We could ask.
Yeah, we could ask. We certainly don't have insurers that covers pandemics.
And I suspect it would be quite costly given the current situation.
Any further questions for us? Yes, councillor.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to move a motion if I may.
So we go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move that council approves the full $40,000 in cash sponsorship for the 2022 Australian Seniors Tennis Championship on condition that council secures the sponsorship naming rights for the event and to allocate the additional $40,000, which as Ms Green has said, will be carried forward from this year's event support fund to the 2122 Financial Year Event Support Fund budget.
Thank you. Do I, seconded, seconded councillor Ben. Do you want to speak to the motion, councillor?
Yes, absolutely. As our businesses, communities and associated organisations recover from the significant detrimental economic and social effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, I believe council have an extremely important role to play in supporting the economic and social recovery of our people. Victorian governments snapped lockdown in February, which amongst other things caused the cancellation of the Victorian Country Week tennis tournament that was to be hosted by the Swan Hill Lawn Tennis Club, absolutely gutted the many volunteers who had spent tireless hours preparing for the event and ripped an estimated $2 million from the Swan Hill economy. As outlined in the brief, this event will attract approximately 2,000 people into our city for around two weeks with an estimated direct economic benefit of approximately $2.2 million. Add that to the hosting of Victorian Country Week tennis as well next year at a similar timing for a further $1.5 to $2 million for our local economy. So this, these two events already have the potential for the catch cry of Swan Hill's summer of tennis with not only around $4 million of economic benefit, but to give life to the souls of club volunteers who do this because they love what they do, they love their club and they love their community. Aside from the economics, this is a national event, putting not just Swan Hill's tennis complex, the largest grass court complex in the southern hemisphere on the national stage, but with the right backup promotion, and I believe Swan Hill Inc. have a very strong role to play in that, it provides the opportunity to promote the rest of the city and the region far and wide. We get very limited opportunities to do this on the national stage and to host national events and hence this is a great opportunity. Done well, we can most likely look forward to this being hosted on a three-yearly cycle and potentially we can attract other tennis events to our great complex as well. The financial implications have been mentioned in the question time, but basically this is rolling over $40,000 from this financial year into next financial year to fund this event. So it really has no impact on the council bottom line. The money has already been budgeted for event support, so let's use it for what it's budgeted for, to support events. Fallow councillors, I seek your support for this $40,000 investment to drive over $4 million of direct economic benefit to our region, let alone the multipliers, the community and social benefits and a good news story for Swan Hill and positive promotion of the region.
Thank you. Councillor Ben?
Mr Mayor, could I ask a question just in relation to this motion that's been put up?
Certainly.
Ms Green, the recommended motion was $30,000 and the question that councillor Benham asked before about Swan Hill Week putting in 10, would the organisers... were the organisers happy with that proposal, the forty thousand coming that way?
Um, as, as I understand it.
Um, was, may I also ask a question?
Yes.
Was the amount that Swan Hill Inc. has allocated specifically for promotion or just towards the event for the, for the items that the tennis group asked for?
My understanding is for sponsorship.
For sponsorship.
Yeah, which is not itemised.
Could I, can I suggest an amendment?
Uh, you can propose an amendment at this point in time because it is the mo- the motion as put, yes?
Um, I would like to suggest that we do maintain the forty thousand dollars, which will give an increase, but allocate that ten thousand dollars for our promotional budget for this event, for promoting the region. So.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what that means, sorry, councillor.
That we define that ten thousand dollars of our cash sponsorship fee for promotion of the event, given that we're told that they're, they've, they've got their, their, um, mechanics covered, that ten thousand dollars of our forty thousand dollars.
Still be given to tennis seniors Victoria, but for them to do the promotion or retained by us and us doing the promotion?
Retained by us for us to control, so we've got a budget allocated to, for promotion of the region and the event.
So can I suggest?
Point three?
Yeah, can I suggest what councillor McKay is saying is the officer's recommendation, but with a point three, an additional ten thousand for council to promote the event.
Yeah, the, the event and the region.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just have that clarified? I was just saying ten thousand dollars on top of the forty thousand.
No, the forty had come back to thirty.
And the ten.
Is an additional, so we're still providing. The tennis club receives the amount they were asking for, for the, the logistics, but we are not lowering our commitment.
Yeah.
Because promotion isn't important, um, secondary part of it for the region as well as the event itself.
Are you happy with that amended motion as written on the screen there, councillor McKay?
Yep.
Do we have a second? We don't have a second, the amendment lapses. We are back to the original, um, motion. Uh, speakers for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, firstly, in response to the amendment, I don't think that that's the job of Swan Hill Inc. to do the promotion of the tennis club, that's not the role of council. So I support the original motion as per councillor King. Like he said, we do have, we have an event support fund for an event. This is a national event that we have been looking for, for a long time. We're never going to get the AFL footy to come and do a preseason game here. We're not going to get any of those sort of national events. This is perfect for what Swan Hill is and the Swan Hill Summer of Tennis has a great ring to it. It is an investment. Let's not look at this as a forty thousand dollar handout, it's an investment. This is a hand up to help seed this event and make it the best that it absolutely can be. We know these things, even though budgets can be done to the millimetre, there's always things that go wrong. So giving additional support, I think, is absolutely vital. Again, we have the money to be able to do it. We need to be enthusiastic about this, we need to be excited about this. As council, we need to get behind this to support not only the tennis club, but a two-point-two million dollar injection into our local economy is something that will help to ease the burn that Swan Hill suffered from the loss of Country Week. It's, it's never going to solve that, but it will certainly help ease the pain. We've got the infrastructure, we've got the services to make this a wonderful event for the whole town, not just for the tennis club and the sporting community. And we don't want to cut corners, we need a bit of a contingency, so let's support this as much as we're able to.
Thank you, councillor Benham. Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor McKay?
I'm a hundred percent in support of the motion. Um, it, it has come to my attention, which I didn't realise, that we have the most amount of tennis courts in one location. I, uh, first in the southern hem- hemisphere and we have, so we actually have a, um, national class facility and we need to be promoting it to, to the nation as a great place to hold events. It's a wonderful asset, it's great that we have it and, um, let's encourage this event as hopefully the first of many.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to say Swan Hill's reputation for holding an amazing and very successful Country Week tennis event um, has become known Australia-wide and it's been happening for many, many years. I think the second event will build on that reputation and, but the expenditure will also support Country Week as well, um, with the preparation of the courts and associated expenditure areas. So, yeah, I think it's a, um, it's a great way to go.
Okay. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against this for the motion?
Yes, speaker. Mr. Mayor, thank you. A good lot of things, um, given the thirty thousand recommended and the ten thousand of them advised, Swan Hill makes up the forty thousand that they, they reasonably applied for. Uh, but given it is a new event to our region, um, I'm, I'm prepared to support it in this instance. And going along the thing with most of our events is that the aim is that they become self-sufficient. Uh, even though we do put in, usually we do put a bit of money towards it anyway, but the idea is get them here, get our clubs and our community group self-sufficient and be able to afford to run the own event. Uh, so in this, this given it's the first time in a year, I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, look, like councillor Jeffrey, I was a little bit concerned about the going from thirty to forty. Um, this is a national event, like, and provides international players, maybe not this year because of COVID in future years. The concern I have, I do support the, um, the whole screen, the whole event, but if we're going to do this into future years, councillors and other councillors, other councillors may have to look at this, that, um, maybe we have to use that money from Swan Hill Inc. The businesses are the ones that are going to win most out of this, not the rate payers. The rate payers will have the opportunity for a great event, great branding for our town, great, all that sort of stuff, terrific. The interesting, other interesting part I'll make is seniors are thirty and over, so I don't know what that makes me. But anyway, I'm real teed. But in saying that, look, it is a great event for Swan Hill, but I think in future years, if we do a good job this year, we do it right, I'm happy to support the forty thousand with a little bit of a question mark to it, but in future years, maybe rather than putting it up because it'll go up every year that they come back to want this sponsorship, we then look at maybe including Swan Hill Inc. sponsorship as part of ours into the future. But as an inaugural event, I think, yes, I'd support the forty thousand dollars in this instance. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, please. Councillor King, you wish to pass it?
Uh, just perhaps councillor McF- Mcfee, it might be a veterans' class that you could, if you're in, it's above, above seniors. If you're looking for something to participate in. Um, look, I think thi- this is, it's fantastic around the chamber that, that, um, councillors seem like they're generally in favour of this. I guess we'll have a vote to find that out, but, um, uh, this, yeah, like, like everybody said, this is a national event. It puts us on the national stage and council can support it and we can let Swan Hill Inc. do what they've been chartered to do, which is to promote, um, the businesses and the city and the region. Um, they're our marketing arm, so let's them, let's let them, uh, now do, invest in this event as well and do what they do best. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour. Ask you unanimously. Item B twenty-one point two six, Community Grants Programme Update, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Green, please.
Very apt. This report follows the previous. Um, council runs a very successful community grants programme, um, in two parts, or three parts really. Um, community grants for community groups, which are usually small, small grants to enable facilities to be updated or for community events. Um, our events grants, which we just talked about in relation to, um, the tennis competition, as well as our endeavour scholarships, which are our grants to school students leaving, um, leaving all our schools across the municipality. Um, we've, we've carried out, officers have carried out a review of how the, the, uh, the system works in terms of making applications for grants as well as assessing them, as well as the, uh, granting of them, the acquittal, all of those things, and certainly looked at ways to streamline that and has recommended the, the dot points on page one thirty, which are things that need to be improved primarily to make it easier for the community, um, particularly those smaller community groups that, um, often don't have matching funding upfront to be able to purchase a new stove for a, a community centre or something like that. So we're looking at making a, a change so that they're actually grant funds rather than a reimbursement cost, which is how it works now, which will also hopefully reduce, um, paperwork. Um, grants will still have to be acquitted, um, and that's the mu- time to ensure that the money has been spent correctly. Um, there are a number of other things there, trying to improve the guidelines, investigating a grant management system. There are a couple around that other councils use, including Gannawarra, so we're in conversation with Gannawarra about, um, the grant system they use. Um, as I say, all, all of the improvements are largely designed to make it easier for council to grant money and easier for the people that are seeking grants to make application and then to, um, use that money and, and equip that grant. So the recommendation is that council approve the proposed amendments to the Community Grants Programme.
Thank you. Ms. Green, questions, councillors? Councillor McKay?
Um, it says under one of the dot points, create a new tier under the ASF banner to attract hallmark, a hallmark event. Is that, could you explain that to me?
Yep, so that's under the events, um, um, of the community grants, so that is for something like what we've just said. So that we allocate a big chunk of money to a new, new event that brings in lots of people, so a hallmark event.
Would, would that mean, um, expanding the fund to, to incorporate that amount? Or does it mean taking away from other?
So you'll recall that, um, council used to allocate about thirty thousand dollars a year to near-Zero celebrations? So that money has remained in the
Mm-hmm.
grant pool, so we're suggesting it would be that amount of money that could be for a new calling a hallmark event.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Yes, councillor?
I've just got a question about if the money's actually paid upfront rather than after the project happens, what's the acquittal process to make sure that they don't go out and have a party?
So, so the, usually it's some sort of industry, put events to one side, so this is for the community grants, which is where it impacts the most. They're usually buying a, a stove or fixing a kitchen or doing something like that. We actually demand to see photos of the completed works. Um, so that, that's an example. So the acquittal process is, is like our grants that we get from the government. We have to provide evidence that we've used the money, um, to, to complete the project that we said we would. So we've talked about, um, uh, within the guidelines that if people don't acquit, then they won't be eligible for a grant ever again. So we're talking about grants of, you know, five hundred, a thousand dollars. You know, we're not talking huge grants.
Hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Benham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To your knowledge, why was it set up as a reimbursement structure in a dollar-for-dollar originally? Is that because in the past we might have had clubs similar to what councillor Young was talking about, where they might get the money, um, go and recruit a new full forward and get the footy club to do the work or donate goods and things like that? Is that where it's come from? Why was it set up like this originally?
Um, risk averse. I'm not sure. It's been like that since I've been here and, um, and it's only been this year that I've been alerted to the fact that some of our smaller community groups are missing out.
Yeah.
Because they can't match the funding.
Yeah.
And they're the ones who probably need it most.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Yes?
I'll move the motion as per recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Benham. A second, councillor King? Did you speak to the motion, councillor Benham?
Sure, quickly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The key words that I have taken out of this report are simpler and a reduction of paperwork, which has got to be good for everyone involved, um, not just the smaller community groups. But this is finally what a true community grants programme in my mind should be, that a lot open it up to so many, those small community groups that don't have money to do dollar-for-dollar grant schemes and, and the service clubs that in the past have missed out because they simply don't meet the, all of those criteria to be able to apply. So simplifying things is, um, is a much better way to go about it. These proposed changes will allow, um, those community groups and service clubs to apply and improve community infrastructure and at the heart of everything, isn't that what our job is to do? So, good job.
Thank you, councillor Benham. Councillor King?
I just want to add to that and just say that it's a reminder to the community that, um, council exists for more than just roads and rubbish, that, that we're here for, for community, we're here for people. Um, and this is, this is evidence of that.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Would you like to close, councillor?
I don't think I need to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to the vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Item B twenty-one point two seven, Instrument of the Corporate and Authorization. Ms. Green, please.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very broad, uh, very briefly. Uh, council has employed a new team leader in the planning department, Tamara Broadsmith. Um, she's required to be authorised under the Local Government Act to carry out, um, largely prosecution, uh, issues. And, uh, two other planning officers, Steph and Lo and Julie Lund, require some amendments to their instrument, um, of appointment for authorisation. So the recommendation is that Tamara, Tamara be appointed as an authorised officer, that the instruments for existing staff members, members be amended, um, that the instrument takes effect upon signing and sign and seal the instruments as soon as possible.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Yes, councillor Benham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, in really simple terms, what happens if we don't?
That they can't, they're not delegated to take that action.
And then what happens to the procedural chain down the line?
Um, we, we would have to, probably John's delegated, he could probably sign things, but, um.
So this is appoint, this is appointing the officers as authorised officers.
Hmm.
Um, it's, it's different to the delegation.
Yeah.
It, it's actually means that only authorised officers, sorry, put more correctly, an officer needs to be authorised under the act to do certain things in regards to prosecutions.
Yep.
So if it's not, uh, if they're not appointed authorised, then the existing staff who are authorised would have to carry that burden. Because there is some staff already authorised, I think, Heather, certainly Steph and.
Yeah, I think I'm authorised too.
Yeah.
So ultimately it makes Tamara's position almost redundant then, if we were?
Oh, no, she, no, she does a lot more than.
Okay.
Oh, this is a very minor component of the job.
Okay, right. I'm just curious as to.
So it's only prosecutions, it's not day-to-day working a visuring permit, so it's not bad.
Yeah.
That's different.
Right. Okay.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Oh, I was going to move the recommendation.
Okay, do I have a second, councillor Young, just to speak to the motion, councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, but it's, uh, it's hard enough in the report, Mr. Mayor, but it is important that we be authorised, uh, servant staff or council in order to implement the local government action, some of our local laws and I think some of the planning and community issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey's cover.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Did you wish to close, councillor Jeffrey?
Bye, ma'am.
Thank you. We'll go to a vote. All those in favour, carried unanimously. Item B twenty-one point two, a council plan progress report for the third quarter of twenty twenty twenty-one. Mr. Lester, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So here presented is the report from one January twenty-one to thirty-one March twenty-one on the progress for the council plan from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. Um, it notes the progress in the quarter against the five council plan areas of economic growth, community enrichment, infrastructure, governance and leadership and environment. Uh, some key points that we note that recur, that we achieved during the quarter were specifically the opening of the, uh, Robben Vale Library and open to the public its operations from the eighteenth of January. Uh, council has completed installations for alternative energy sources on council buildings complete with reporting software that allow us to monitor the progress in the future. And tender documents and contract award for the building of eight houses for Royal Street in Robben Vale have been completed during the month amongst numerous other things. Um, we ask that the council note that this progress report as attached.
Any questions? Any questions, councillor? Any questions, councillors? Have there any questions? Can I have a move, please?
I'll move the motion.
Councillor McCann, seconded councillor McPhee. Who speaks to the motion, councillor McCann?
Um, it's very good that we provide these updates and we can see where we are progressing against our council plan. Uh, thank you very much to the officers for their continued work. And just to communicate to the public that we are, will be making a new, working on a new council plan and how important it is to have their involvement. We've worked very hard and the council, council employees themselves have worked very hard towards progressing the last community plan and it's very exciting to be moving towards a new one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee? Councillor McCann covered it all, Mr Mayor. Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Would you close, councillor McCann?
No, thank you.
We'll go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Item B twenty one point two nine, quarterly review of financial performance and financial position to the thirty first of December, twenty twenty. Mr Leskey, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. So attached you have the financial performance and balance sheet, financial position by the council versus budget through for the six months, sorry, December twenty twenty. You know, Warren here can take you through the details of it and give you a bit more explanation.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. The report's very straightforward. Pleasant report that we're on track to produce another certain budget, probably a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars better than our original budget projection. And that's come about because of a number of savings. And this is a report as of thirty first of December. We believe that our forecast is going to be better result than that, better favorable result than that. But most of the saves have come about because of saves in employee costs over the course of the six months, mainly due to COVID, not being able to recruit staff, appoint staff. So there's been some savings there. There's been unfavorable variances in relation to our general insurances. As we discussed at our budget meeting, that's continuing to grow, about up to a hundred and fifty, twenty eight thousand dollars next year. Our biggest hit, I guess, has been our ability to earn interest on our investments and on our rates. We're predicting a just over four hundred thousand dollar reduction in the budgeted interest. So it's seven hundred thousand dollars budgeted and we're expecting somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars there. So that's the biggest one in those things. Similarly, the due to COVID, our fees, the fees and charges have been reduced compared to what we budgeted. And that's evident here at the town hall that's been closed for some time, the rental information centre, location care programme and various commercial works with aged care facilities and so forth. So I just did a calculation before I came over to the meeting and it looks like the finding settlement, although it's showing here an unfavorable variance of thirty one thousand dollars is tracking much better than that. We've had, I think, caves probably going good for the finding settlement. The numbers down there and then the revenue that's coming through appears to be quite good. So I reckon we'll do better than that unfavorable variance. We might do better than the original budget, hopefully. So that'd be my early prediction there. Having said that, we're going into a quiet period. We've got one more public holiday before the end of June. So councillor, happy to take any questions in relation to the report. I've skipped over a lot of the things that have been mentioned in there, but let's finish the years ago. Good morning.
Questions, councillors? Oh, yes, councillor, no questions? Remove the motion, Mr Mayor. Has been the recommendation to our second, councillor Jeffrey? Who speaks to the motion, councillor McPhee?
I'll just quickly, Mr Mayor, look, it's important that we do review our finances quarterly. And as you can see on this, any budget is flexible, it's up and down everywhere. But the pleasing thing is we are going to, or currently looking at favorable balance in the, so that's quite, so in fact, finance department for the work they do in relation to this. Thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, just quickly, like given the difficult last twelve months and twelve plus months now, it is good to say that despite the extensive, you know, favorable and unfavorable incumbent expenses that are there now, it's favorable so far. Good and hopefully.
Thank you. Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor McCann?
Thank you. It's very great, really great to hear that the finding settlement is likely tracking better than unfavorable. It was something that seemed likely to me when I read through the report, given that we have seen a huge increase in visitation or at least a lot of increased visitation to regional areas, which is wonderful. I suppose it's a moment to give thanks that we have had a fairly smooth transition through this difficult year and that we're very fortunate that many of our industries have been able to chug along as normal, but also to acknowledge that hospitality and retail have had very difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Who speaks to close, councillor McPhee? We'll go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Item B twenty one point three O, audit committee, Mr Leskey, please.
Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. This paper is for council to note an update. On the eighth of April, the Audit Committee met for the third time in this financial year and they approved minutes from the December meeting previously. So attached is a copy of the items that were discussed at that meeting. And I'm happy to take any questions.
If there are no questions, Mayor, move the motion as per the recommendation. A second, please, councillor Jeffrey? Who speaks to the motion?
Yeah, look, as a member of the Audit Committee, that does play an important role. It's an arms length from council. It is a in confidence meeting, the minutes, so they can't be put into the actual agenda. But you can see by the items in there, and this is one to nine, what they do address during those meetings. The independent members of the two councils involved in that committee do look very closely at all the words of council, just as a independent arm of council, to make sure that we are tracking in the right direction. It's a very important role and I'd encourage your councillors to have a stint on the Audit Committee sometimes. Thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey?
I'm excited, sir.
Any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Who speaks to close, councillor?
None.
McPhee? We'll go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Item B twenty one point three one, S five, instrument of delegation to the chief executive officer. Mr McLean, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Local Government Act twenty twenty, at section eleven, provides council with the ability to delegate its powers to the chief executive officer. There are some exceptions however, which I'll get to in a moment. Council, along with most other councils in the state, uses Maddox lawyers to review the act and to provide us with a set of delegation documents. And Maddox reviews these typically on a six monthly basis or whenever there's any significant change to legislation. They've recently issued an update and they're recommending that all councils should refresh the delegation to the CEO. If I take council to page two hundred and thirteen of the agenda, you will see there that this is a power to determine any issue, take any action or do any act or thing arising out of the, connected with basically the functions of local government, except, and there's a large list of exceptions, which is things like striking a rate, adopting a budget, borrowing money, making or cancelling local laws, governance rules and the like, council plan, the strategic issues that council does and should rightly deal with exempt from that delegation. So, Mr Mayor, I'm recommending that council exercise the powers conferred under section eleven of the Local Government Act and any other legislation referred to in the attached instrument of delegation to the CEO and delegate to the person holding, to me, the person holding the position of chief executive officer or acting CEO, the powers, duties, et cetera. The recommendations here for council will.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? No questions? Can I have a move, please? Move councillor McPhee? Second councillor Ben? Who speaks to the motion?
Yeah, just quickly, Mr Mayor, some people complain about the bureaucracy and the red taping governments of all levels. If we didn't have this, the red tape would be extraneous, the amount of red tape that would be involved because it would come back to council, we'd have to meet every time to do these functions. This is what this is about, to make the smooth running of the council offices. So both this and the next report relate to that, to make it a better and a more efficient service for the community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Against the fee, councillor Bennett?
Nothing, thank you.
Any further speakers? There not being any, councillor McPhee, who speaks to close? No? Go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Item B twenty one point three two, S six, instrument of delegation to members of council staff.
Mr Mayor, if there's no questions, I'll move the recognition, the motion as per the recommendation.
And seconded, councillor Ben? Who speaks to the motion, councillor McPhee?
The CEO would have given us exactly the same spiel, but this relates to officers below his level. And once again, this is about the efficient running of the council staff, to be able to do those day to day stuff without having to come to a council meeting. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ben? Who speaks to move? Who speaks to close? We'll go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Section C reports, decisions which, uh, sorry, division, uh, sorry, decisions which need action and ready to pass. Item C twenty one point five, Simon Seale Report. Mr McLean, please.
Mr Mayor, the usual monthly report where council is advised of the time as the council seal was used. You'll see in this report, page three hundred and twelve, that it was affixed to eight different documents and they are generally occupancy leases. Importantly, the second one, Mr Mayor, employment contract of the CEO, leases and usually there's some section one seven three agreements in there as well.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? If there are none, can I have a move, please? Move councillor Keen? Seconded councillor Ben? Who speaks to the motion, councillor?
No, nothing yet.
No one speaks to the motion? No, we'll go to a vote. All those in favour, asked unanimously. Item C twenty one point six, council assemblies, record of attendance and agenda items.
Again, Mr Mayor, it's really a procedural report where we've laid out the agenda items and the attendances at the various council assemblies since council last met.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? If there are no questions, can I have a move, please? Move councillor Ben? Seconded councillor Jeffrey? Who speaks to the motion?
No, procedural.
Procedural. Go to a vote. All those in favour, passed unanimously. Section D notices, a motion, we have none. Uh, foreshadowed items, we have none. Urgent items not included in the agenda. Councillor McPhee?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I have one that I would like the council to accept as an urgent item. They come about as a result of the meeting we had on the sixteenth of April, um, this last Friday, with the New South Wales Transport Roads Minister and the working party in relation to the bridge, the Swan Hill Bridge. So I'd like to get the accepted as urgent item.
And I'll second that.
Accepted as an urgent item? Councillors?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Thank you. Go ahead, councillor McPhee.
All right. Look, the, I won't read the whole motion, the councillors have got it, it will be in the minutes. It's basically as a result of the meeting we had with the Roads Minister, the Honourable Paul Tool, the Regional Transport and Roads Minister for New South Wales. We've got to thank our local member, Mr Walsh, for setting that meeting up with him. Even with all the floods on in New South Wales, it was bio zooming. It's a wonderful thing bio zooming, puts you up on the side of the road in the middle of nowhere during this meeting, but at least he made time for us. We need to follow up in relation to this. The planning about the Swan Hill Bridge has been ongoing for over forty years, I believe. And we still haven't got the right location where we want to go. It seems to us to be coming to a point right now where both sides, communities both sides of the river, councils both sides of the river, seem to be in agreeance with this alignment, that's the McCallum Street alignment. We've got to work on that and move forward with that now to see if, and push the minister to make sure he gets that community consultation he's had out, which we believe it's favorable for that position. And not only that, to then move into the design phase as well, because this is going to take a couple of years to even get to this stage before we start building the bridge. But we need to do this and need to get it on. And the important part of this motion is also, once that alignment's done, we take the planning approvals for nine eight off the table and therefore there can no longer be a bridge through our wonderful riverside park. I think everyone's in agreement with this motion, as I say, in relation to both sides of the river. The majority of the community is in great agreement with this location. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McPhee? Any further speakers for the motion? Councillor Bennett?
Just really quickly, we need to be swift with any action, which is why I support this as an urgent matter of business. It's been going on forty years. The more swift that we can be with regard to this bridge and getting an agreement on an alignment, the better. Hopefully it sends a strong message that we want action, any sort of action, because at the moment, to this point, it's been moving at a pace similar to the speed of it that's now on the bridge. And we'd like to, forgive the, be a bit tondro, but kick it into top gear and make this a, treat it like it's a major highlight because it is for us. So I support this.
Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor?
I'd just like to, as the other councillors have said, this has been going on for many, many years. I think any action that we can take that's going to speed up this process and get this built, bridge built, is what should be happening here.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. You know, I like this man's seat, particularly my last five years that I've been a councillor. The reality is a lot of this is out of our hands as a council. It's up to both New South Wales and the state body to get their act together around the alignment. They've been known, we believe that the council is the top of the street. And the development of the design, the sourcing of the budgeting from white officials committed, but from the state bodies is what is needed as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Any further speakers for the motion? If there are none, you have to close, councillor?
Oh, look, the only light, Mr Mayor, is we do, like other councillors, we know to rush this or continue to pursue it because there is sixty million dollars from federal money sitting there. Once they design this, then we can hit both state governments. The money will be there to build our new bridge, which will help the economy of both sides of the river. Thank you.
Thank you. All those, we'll go to a vote now, all those in favour, asked unanimously. Section D, considered and ordered on councillor reports. Who's going first today? Councillor Bennett?
Sure, I'll go first. I didn't think I would have much to report on, given the incident of missing last meeting, but I have a full page, so buckle up. Uh, we had the official opening of the Robbenvale Community Hub with Ali Cupper and Minister Pulford. Had an informal lunch with them both, just for general discussions around Robbenvale and the region beforehand, which is very much appreciated. There's been several more training sessions via the M A V online courses, which are fantastic. It means we don't have to get in the car and drive to Melbourne every time we want to do a council training session. So they've been fantastic. Over the Easter weekend, so we also had Mary Ann Thomas to turn sod at the Ronald Street subdivision with DJ Gardner as well. That's very exciting. Over the Easter weekend, I hosted a mental health awareness event with Toby Price, who's now at O A M, and the Juroe superstar, if you don't know who Toby Price is. I caught up with Kane Sparks too and had lunch, just to give me a briefing on youth services and their vision for the future. And I encourage everyone to have a talk to Sparksy and his staff because they're doing some amazing things and have some great ideas. Also had my first audit committee meeting on, which I was a little bit nervous about, I'm not going to lie, because that's not usually where the side of the brain that I use, but it was very informative and well worth it. We had a Robbenvale Action Committee last week. And also lastly, at the end of March, Robbenvale lost an indomitable character within our community, Terry Turner, who passed away on his seventy fourth birthday. Terry was an incredible contributor to Robbenvale's sporting landscape, particularly in terms of basketball. And he's got one of our, having one of our all stars team named in the Turner family's honour. But also in terms of football and the much wider community. So I think it's appropriate that we as council recognise Terry's passing and send our condolences to the Turner and to the Fana families. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bennett. Councillor Jeffrey?
I'll tell you, excellent.
Councillor Young?
I had the Word in Progress Association meeting, the art gallery exhibition opening of Earthhand in the Finland store. Went to the town hall performance of Rachel Black and Michael McCormick, which is something
Um, went to the town hall's performance of Rachel Black and Michael McCormick, which was, um, something different. Um, Lady Macfees farewell, um, the opening of the Nia Netball Courts, the opening of Robbenvale Community Hub, the business breakfast. Swan Hill needs a new hospital meeting and the meeting with the minister, State Minister Thomas. And the opening of the Lake Burger Archer.
Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor McCall?
Um, the Quintaf Community Dinner, uh, Lee Macfees fa- farewell morning tea, safe Swan Hill Serenity Meeting, the opening of the Nia Netball Courts, the business breakfast at Spoons, uh, Boundary Bend Progress Association Meeting and Lake Burger Lions Club Flying Museum Art Exhibition.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee?
All right, a couple of things I want to, Mr Mayor, I'll be in a minute.
Thank you.
Uh, a couple for me, Swan Hill Link Ordinary Meeting last night, Swan Hill Multiplex Meeting last month, uh, which was held out on site and so I got some priorities, uh, for two of the facilities and priorities for the club out there, uh, and the Quintaf Community Dinner for me as well.
Thank you. And, uh, similarly, uh, Quintaf Community Dinner, uh, Swan Hill needs a new hospital committee meeting, uh, Nia Netball Courts opening, opening of the Robbenvale Community Hub, uh, business breakfast, Swan Hill link, sod turn at Royal Street, Swan Hill Residents and Reposers Association Committee, um, and of course the teams meeting with the New South Wales Roads Minister Paul, Paul Tool. Uh, M D R yesterday with the A triple C water trading inquiry, um, the road show they're putting on there. And of course the N W A Zoom meeting this morning on water quality issues within the basin. Thank you, councillors. Next item, uh, in camera items. We do not have any?
No, Mr Mayor.
Uh, that completes today's proceedings. We, uh, we need to clear the meeting closed at three oh one P M. Councillors to remain seated and so until we, uh, disconnect it.